Would you please join us in the pledge of allegiance, please? You all ready to roll? All right, here we go.
I pledge allegiance identified on the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome to our meeting. Like the call of the order, August twenty first, like board meeting. First up on our agenda is a police sergeant ceremonial oath and penning, so please no hazardous material, bloodborne pathogens or anything because our health, we don't have a health officer here tonight, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. So. Go for it. Please introduce yourselves in the audience when you do speak, so everybody at home can know who you are.
Is our mic on?
It should be on.
Okay, I'm Chief Jason Warlock. I'm the police chief here in Damascotta. For all of you who have never seen me before. I'm Kyle Sylvester. Sergeant. So I'd like to do something somewhat ceremonial, right? I think it's really an important thing when you become a sergeant or in any leadership supervisory role in a department. I think it's very important that they get recognized for their for their service and for what they're about to undertake, and I really wish there were more people here. But I'd like to introduce some people in the audience. Most of our department is here. One person couldn't make it today. Sorry if I'm back to you, Josh. And Kyle's wife and child is here and also his mother and father and the rest of our agency. So we're very blessed that they were able to come here today, and that shows. You know, their support for him and their understanding of what Kyle has to do every day in our agency. So what I want to do is I do a. Kind of a an off script ceremonial swearing in. It's not the official swearing in because Kyle's already been sworn in as a law enforcement officer here, but it's something that I do that's near and dear to me. Every time we do any type of a swearing in for something like this, which is. The swearing in is not a swearing in that he's going to be a great police officer. We already know he is. It's the swearing in on what he's going to do to continue to be better and help our community, right? So Kyle, go ahead and raise your raise your right hand if you would, please. Kyle, do you swear to be professional, courteous, respectful, and mindful of others during your duties as a patrol sergeant for the town of Damascotta?
I do.
Do you swear to develop a strong relationship with the citizens, staff, and community?
I do.
Do you swear to be the best you can be every day, both on and off? Will you strive to leave a position, a positive impression in the minds of all you encounter during your duties as a Damascotta patrol sergeant?
I do.
Do you swear to serve the town of Damascotta every day to the best of your abilities?
I do.
It is my honor to introduce Patrol Sergeant John Kyle Sylvester to the board and citizens of Damascotta. There is no doubt in my mind that you will be a great and respected leader within this community. I look forward to mentoring you and working with you to make your make our department better every day. And at this point, what I'd like, as I'd like to see whoever wants to pin Sergeant Sylvester come up and place a badge on him. I said the blood was optional, folks. This is where the blood is optional.
The red bag out.
Holding this whole career, that this is there was going to be an opportunity that his daughter or wife was going to be able to stick him. Can you come out quickly? Just want to get a quick picture of of his daughter and his wife here. Thank you. Congratulations, Kyle. Mom and dad? Are you sure? We got ten minutes, so we can.
Okay, oh, I just got something I'm supposed to read, I guess.
Thanks. Thank you guys very much. Thank you for coming. Thank you, board. I appreciate it.
So I I got I just got handed something from from our chair and and. Who is not here. On behalf of the town of Damascotta, the board would like to congratulate Kyle Sylvester on his recent promotion to sergeant with the Damascotta Police Department. His dedication to the citizens of our town have not gone unnoticed, and we look forward to continued to his continued tenure. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks, very much. We'll get out of your hair now. Don't let them go over there.
Yeah, we gotta get this thing going. Yeah, yeah. All right, thank you all. So first up is the select board minutes of July tenth. Here, a motion on the minutes of July tenth. Any corrections?
They need to hit the record officially if you want to.
Oh, which one was the tenth or the twenty fourth?
Tom did have a couple of things he noted and sent an email, but we just need him for the record repeated.
For the tenth?
For the tenth.
I'm trying, let me just find it here.
He had him for.
Wasn't here for the tenth, so.
July tenth meeting, it was just a spelling of.
Yeah. Yeah, Lorraine Farady, not Faraday.
Yeah.
Only for the record, because somebody knows who Faraday is. So I make a motion to.
You can't.
I can't make a motion.
No, he weren't here that day.
Oh.
Well, I'll make a motion.
Approve amended minutes.
With it with the correction of Lorraine Farady's name.
I'll second that. All those in favor? Tom, no. That. Oh, yeah, no, yeah. And then July twenty fourth, the meeting minutes of July twenty fourth.
Well, you're listed as here and absent at the same time.
I am absent.
Okay.
I was at a baseball game in Wyndham, so I was not here.
Whether, yeah, there were questions about the score and that sort of thing.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, let's see if there's anybody else has any.
Any errors, admissions, corrections on that?
Nope, so I'll move the minutes of July twenty fourth, noting that that you are not present, just absent.
Mm hmm. Thank you. Hopefully it was an excused absence.
I think it was.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Financial reports. We have payroll warrants number eight and number five.
Haven't made it this way.
We haven't.
I'm sorry.
So do you want to just look those over and we'll move on to? I think we could. Anybody have an issue with skipping over to the official action items for the medical caregiver retail license renewal?
Good idea.
That's that sound perfect?
Yes.
Get somebody out of here so they can go home. Yeah. So. Any questions? We'll move that up. Any concerns from the board on the application of any type or?
No, I'll make a motion to. Approve the entertainment license.
No, medical caregiver.
Medical caregiver. Well, it's not the bird in there. Well, it is entertainment, a form of entertainment. So so the the medical caregiver retail license for green port cannabis.
I'll second. Any discussion? Here, none. All those in favor? So you're all good.
I'd like to go ahead and make a recommendation, because there is no renewal application. So this is just an application. We simplify that because essentially you guys cashed my check a month ago, so we did the car before the horse.
Yeah, I think, you know, reviewing his application this time around, Michael and I know and Becky, we all looked at the ordinance, and it's very clear everyone must renew. And there's timelines to do that within. You look at the application we've prepared a few years ago, and it just says, is this is this renewal? And it doesn't really clearly outline what the process is within the ordinance. Is it different than a new application? I don't know if it was intended that every year they come for renewal, that you do the full thing, the applica- the application form suggests if only if there's changes, do you note them? So it seems like it's meant to be a little streamlined as long as there hasn't been issues.
My state license up went out specifically states that I have a store location at two and main, so you have that private approval.
Right.
You know that that location just been changed. Altus FYI, they have changed some terminology within the office of cannabis policy as pertains to just their ordinances, their rules. And as a result, town ordinances may need to be slightly modified to incorporate new wording, which essentially replaces the old wording. Specifically, there may be changes to how a town, you know, retail store is labeled, so that may just have to be changed within the Damascotta ordinance.
I'm sure it does, yeah.
Sometime over the next year.
Well, our attorney is already looking it over for us in light of, you know, when yours came as I, we gotta we gotta look this over again. So she did start the process.
The O C P about this because there are new rule terminologies now in effect. So anyway, I appreciate it, Kyle.
Perfect.
Very thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody get a chance. Yep, to look payroll warrants eight and five. Anyone want to make a motion on there?
I'll make a motion to pro payroll warrants.
Five and.
Five and eight.
Eight. Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Uh.
Give me a second here.
Accounts payable warrant nine, I believe it is.
Yes.
Okay. Anyone want to move that?
I'll 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 move the account payable warrant number nine.
I'll second. Any discussion? There, none. All those in favor? Citizens comments, general correspondence, any?
Just parking lot pride out yesterday handing out some just some quick flyers we had made up with the Q R. Someone from the committee had made up for the parking lot project. Put a Facebook post up two weeks out. Mind folks, try and direct them to the website for information. We did get some feedback online about that, and so. Just kind of keeping track of the questions as they come in. Some are relevant and worthy of answering. Is that they're being asked multiple times, and so. We'll continue to update that website page with more information as the party goes on, and utilize that as kind of a place to get information.
What what are the common questions at this point, comments?
Is the boat launch still open? Why now? And, you know, and those are the two kind of common ones to have parking work and I park. Questions about will be done in phases and. Actually, yes, but the first phase is the biggest chunk of it, so it's. At one point, we talked about the tank maybe being done, but it's not how they're going to approach that. But just in case you're hearing things, we do have it updated on the website and trying to funnel people there for consistent information. We'll do our best to keep it up to date and current.
How many is a report?
Communications, a new notification system will be active next week, and we're just finalizing some of the. Options people haven't signed up to get certain types of notices for if you're trying to. Bring that down a little bit, and someone just wants something very specific, like election updates or dog updates. I'm just trying to pre. Think ahead about, you know, what people might want to have that doesn't go out to the general all the time. Mentioned a little bit about the parking lot project. It does start September third. Expecting to meet with the project manager Friday, just to be on the ground and just go over a couple of things that have been lingering to try and get answers on. The engineers are supposed to put out by the end of this week, the solicitation for bids for the flood wall. So they went through and George and I worked with them on, they created a list of vendors and there was ten or twelve vendors that they looked into different types of walls. And so they're going to try and solicit all of them. I said, just put it out to all of them. They're all different types. I said, I'd rather us go just a few more emails. They don't respond. They don't respond, but you know, one fills with water, one's more of a hard plastic rigid, you know, kind of like a Jersey barrier type system. And a lot of them are non anchoring and kind of zipping together. That's going to be the easiest for us to roll out without having to put holes in the in the asphalt. Some are anchored. And so there's a range of different types, and within that we'll be able to kind of rank and understand. All the things that go into, can we deploy this with the with with the volunteers and staff we have, and what does it take to clean this up and dry it and store it? Understand all of those types of things and the price, and the one that fills with water, for example, might not be the best option if we're trying to do this in the winter time, and you realize how much water it's going to take to fill it. Right? But it's I still think it's worth understanding. If we're putting it out there.
Last week, kind of, doesn't it have, is it going to interface with the parking lot job?
No, it's an independent deployable temporary flood wall, so we'll use it as roll it out as we need it.
So it's not, so it won't have like. Staniot stamp, whatever, that won't have anything it attaches to.
Nope. I mean, it's possible we end up with something that is anchoring.
Right.
But you gotta like drill the hole, you know, if we can, if we can find something that doesn't require it, that is going to be just as comparable and effective for what we need, then I think we should avoid.
Actually get something that we can roll up that will hold back that water that not is not anchored.
That's what the companies are saying.
We'll find out, you know, when the bids come in. Did we try to figure out how a trailer, like an enclosed trailer or was that?
Hope is to, you know, they kind of come on pallets, boxes, crates, quick deploying kind of crates and certain lengths get packed in there. So. We have talked about if we can buying a trailer throughout this so that it stays packed and ready on wheels to go. That being said, we we do own a trailer, not covered, but if we can get a shipping container, for example, maybe that might be cheaper. We usually have a few days notice that we're going to expect the flood, so we can weigh that.
But if you had the name closed trailer, you wouldn't have to transfer transfer it from a shipping container. So there's one last step you'd have to worry about. And then your shipping container and an enclosed trailer. It's. You know, depends on what size the trailer is, but as far as.
Unloading those off of an enclosed trailer is also something we got to consider, and once you get them in there and got to get them, I mean. The whacker is probably not going to be driving up into a trailer. Like that, so it's just we'll continue to look at the different options we we can look at, but step one, they need to get this out and solicit it. We don't know the lead time on some of these. That'll be part of the. Review is, you know, what is the lead time? If we have a chance to get it in place and available for us to use this winter, that'd be great, just in case. So all those things will be considered. Now, I don't know if you had any other questions or things that aren't in there that you're. Had questions about.
Everybody good?
Yep.
All right, we'll move on to official action items. Number one, entertainment license renewal for schooner landing.
Try again.
Yeah, you can do that one.
I'll move the entertainment license for schooner landing.
Any discussion? All those in favor? We've done number two. So number three, highway equipment reserve request authorization on the salt spreader.
That was. A lot of choices.
Yeah, so there's two. Two products that were so our last year, I don't know if you noticed, we were a little behind on clearing our sidewalks. You know, we didn't have, you know, Hugh'd been with us for twelve years or so, and so he just did it. And we were just one person plus me, and then by the time January came around, I was pretty ineffective. So so we did the best we could to keep up. We had challenges with the machine and but we also didn't really have a way to spread the salt. The applicator we have that goes on the back just wouldn't work for us. And I just kept steps stopped spinning. I believe we probably got it. I'm assuming when we got the whacker or after.
Yes.
Those things, when the salt gets in there and it gets wet, they just corrode. You can see that's similar to the ones kind of at the bottom of the list. It's not a huge expense. It's a small capacity. Talking with John. You know, we'd looked at, you know, the possibility of getting something you might have seen last few years. Hager uses these kind of big boxes on the sidewalk, and this is very similar to that. It holds half a yard, three times, almost three times the capacity of double or almost three times the next ones we were looking at. The difference between the quick cube and the six point O spreader, I had him run those numbers just because that six point O spreader can apply sand if we wanted to. Put something a little coarser through that. The reality is, you know, and I thought maybe doing that to spread it on surfaces or maybe for shoulders potentially. And he's like, it just doesn't make sense. We're not gaining a lot. We do have the spreader for the truck that we have the chute for that we can apply stuff on the shoulders, you know, so. He thinks the quick cube is the best option for us. It's gaining a lot more capacity to get out there. We don't know how far we'll get with half a yard on on hand. But that price includes two boxes, so we'd have a full yard ready to go for.
Some distance.
Would. I know Hugh had said if he tried to run with just that back unit. On the whacker, he'd have to go back, I think, six times during a storm to get it all, and that time just going back and forth is just a couple months wasted. And we historically, while he was here, would use the truck and drive, put the truck up on the curb or the sidewalk and. Red with that chute that we had bought that comes off the big sander. I'm just, I'm not in favor of doing that anymore. And so this would give us.
Yeah, and I didn't like it when he did it.
Seen back by the house.
Yeah, I know.
Just asking for trouble. I mean, the tires.
Tires are granite carbon, not a good thing. You got weight in it.
Yeah, I mean, you.
It's not good.
Good for.
You cut a tire doing that and you're down for the rest of the storm. It's like, I just don't think it's worth the risk. It's not, the sidewalks aren't built to put a truck like that up on there.
No.
This gives us, you know, a good option. It's an investment. It should last us quite a while.
And I mean, you can always buy a more couple more cubes later down the line, but. But I think as as we progress and keep adding more sidewalks, we kind of need something like this.
Right.
And.
Yeah, the box itself isn't too much. I mean, it's there what? Seven forty four piece for the boxes, so if we ever wanted to expand, it wouldn't be that much more. It's less than the hitch attachment pieces. And one of the things we were thinking of is, you know, shouldn't we entertain down the road before this winter, but down the road at a future meeting, the possibility of upgrading the current lawnmower and replacing it with something that could serve as something that could clean the sidewalks? They could run in tandem. And that's the one one downside of this. If we want to use the whacker to clear the sidewalks, you're going to make two trips just because it's a front applicator and. But we can, we're still getting numbers. I have John looking into different models and numbers and things on on a. Upgraded lawnmower. When we last year, we were down, the whacker needed service during the winter. We rented. I don't know, four different types of machines to. Try different ones and and make it work, and a couple of them didn't work for what we needed. Couple of them were just kind of those mini track excavator, mini track. It's good steers, no cab or anything, and it didn't have a blade. It was a bucket, and so it didn't work perfect either, but we did try a few different things, and I think bottom line, we we probably should have something. That could supplement or or work in reserve or become the frontline and let the front front end loader do that job and be a loader as it's getting kind of old itself.
How did you find this particular? Device?
Well, it's very similar to what Hager was using, so we kind of started with who makes them. Boss, apparently quirk chef.
Which is great.
You know, they've I've seen flyers from them for equipment and attachments, and this was one of them, so we tracked it. John tracked it down. You know, they've, I've seen them, um, flyers from them for equipment and, and attachments and this was one of them, so we tracked it, John tracked it down and. Thought he did a great job trying to get the different. Numbers for us and gives you something to think about.
So, any, anybody else have any more questions and we can move on with this?
I am working on, uh, filling out an MMA grant for risk reduction. They do those annually. Um, I haven't put it past any of the department heads yet to see if they have anything they're looking to do, but it's on my radar. If, if not, and the best option. So it doesn't pass us by is to apply for some of that to buy this.
Right.
That would give us up to three thousand dollars if the full award came. Um, so it's possible I can get this offset still. I'm not going to rush to buy it until I get confirmation on that grant. Um, but I, I can still try and bring that price down and not use all of what I'm asking for.
That's great.
So do you still want us to approve it or?
I think you'd give me the opportunity to, to be flexible. If I don't get that grant, I don't want to come back, I can go, but if I do get the grant, then we just won't spend that three grand if we get the full award.
I'll make a motion to authorize up to sixty-five hundred from the highway equipment reserve fund for the purchase of a salt applicator. Any questions? All those in favor? Um, next up is a deputy code enforcement officer appointments. Two.
Um, I still haven't gotten it posted yet, um, I was telling Michael, I'll just send you the, it wasn't that long ago, we posted this and got it filled. And then I was reminded that, oh, I didn't have a, a description or a job opportunity posted because George just walked in the same day, um, our previous one resigned. And I talked to him for an hour and. That was that. Um, so I, I, I just need to get that done. So I've talked with Michael a little bit and between the two of us. Um, he was trying to come up with a plan to stay current with things. George is still able to help with plumbing and that's not something that. Michael and I are going to try and tackles. I can't, because I've already used my interim temporary, when I was in vinyl. Um, you only get six months and you gotta get licensed. Um, code officer, I think you can do up to twelve months before you need to get certified. Honestly, do give you a little bit more of a grace period for that. Um, it, it's familiar for Michael, he, he lives in the ordinances anyways, um, I've done it before, um. And so I think for the short term, I think we'll just hustle to try and get it filled and, um, in the meantime, we can work together to tandem that and keep things moving.
Well, is, are we still talking about sharing with Newcastle?
Um, we are in a position to, you know, share a full time and, and add the benefits just because neither of us budgeted for the benefits. We already both do twenty hours a week in our budget.
Right.
And so we didn't account for this year to add benefits to that. We'd be talking another seven to ten grand each. Um, if we add benefits to make it a full-time attractive, more attractive full-time position.
Well, what are they gonna do?
Same thing we're doing, putting it out as a part-time position.
Okay.
You know, it's possible we could end up with the same person again, but you know, maybe we don't. Um, but I think that's something that Kevin and I will continue talking about and Michael and see like, what do we want to do to try and make it? Do we need to go that route to make it an attractive position to keep people here?
I would suspect so.
In the short term, we'll get.
In the short term, this is what we have to do, but in the long term, definitely.
Mm-hmm.
We don't want to keep changing. It's not very efficient.
Right.
And you guys can't continue to do it for that long.
No, emphasis on short term, hopefully.
Short term, it could be long term.
Never know, someone might walk through the door tomorrow.
They might.
I'm still thinking a retired person, there was a fellow that did, uh. A lot of electrical repairs and just retired a year ago. Can't remember his name other than Dan. But I'll just try to track him down. But you know, when they retire, they might still want to keep their hand in it, you know, pick a few bucks.
Yeah, I mean, I see us in the future, having, uh, you know, if the state doesn't force us to do it, I see us just naturally getting there, but fully adopting the move back. Means uniform building and energy codes. I mean, they're there, they exist, every project needs to be built to it. The states just kind of left us out there at this point. If you're under four thousand, you can choose to actively enforce it, um, and run your permitting system. For, for, for that, we do it for plumbing, but we, we, we haven't been required yet to actively enforce the building standard and.
Has Newcastle adopted those?
No, yeah.
I really, but I think we should.
So I, I've been thinking like, you know, I'd encourage George to, you know, look at it and we can help get him certified in that. Um, I think he was on his own, you know, interested in looking at, in, into it anyways, but he was a, he was a builder, so it was, came natural for him, some of that stuff. I think it's something that, you know, for next year's budgeting and in the future to be thinking about. You know, kind of rolling that in, I think is a little bit of an unknown, just how much time might that take to be doing the internal inspections and plumbing in itself, we know. You know, we can kind of get a sense that's probably a half hour for each inspection. If you're doing the electrical and building stuff, I don't know if that's equally another.
And is there any way that the fees that we charge would? Cover?
We would have to, we, we need to look at the P schedule anyways, but I think that would be something that we would want to. Look at others and understand what do they charge and it's not new, we, we haven't done it.
Right.
Some of them look a little low.
Yeah.
That's George. George had said that people, when they were coming in to. Well, the people have said that our fees were low, looked low, and yeah, relative, um. But again, we don't do move back right now, so that's a whole other thing. I mean, I'm hopeful that. Any expansion in the planning code enforcement area can be cushioned with. Uh, fees.
Yep.
You know, the application fees because then.
Absolutely.
It's the people using that service will.
Exactly, they should help to pay for it.
Yeah. And I, and I, I think we, last time I was here, we, I mentioned like, I don't, I see that. The requirement's only growing, uh, as move back and anything else in state's gonna roll out. Um, rapid thing shrinking, so.
Right.
Yeah, I'm, I'm. I'm trying to take this opportunity in Damar Scott and Newcastle to just get my arms around the code enforcement officer role, the process there, how. Kind of syncs up with, uh, planning review, the planning board, all, every, everything there. Um, so hopefully we can. Make it efficient. And also make it attractive for anybody out there, code enforcement. Yeah, the, the administrative part of it, I don't think is, is what attracts people to that match up, so we can streamline that. Good.
So, someone want to make a motion to approve?
So we're talking about the appointment of Michael. I'm recommending, write it down, I'm recommending that you appoint Michael and I as deputy code enforcement officers for the town so we can actually sign. Right, sign permanent applications if they need to, they need to be. Right now, we've got a few that, like, we just can't sign them because we haven't been appointed yet, so.
We need to move forward.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve Michael and, uh. Our friend here, who's, uh, the deputy, uh. Code enforcement officer.
You mean Andy, right?
Andy.
Yeah.
I do.
No. So I'll second that motion. Any further questions? All those in favor? Tom, Tom, it's six o'clock, do you need to leave?
I'm gonna try to hang in there for a couple more minutes. Thanks, Tom.
Okay, uh, we don't have any other official action items, so select board discussion items is ordinance updates.
Um, it seems as though, I'm guessing on the heels of the last comp plan, um, and Josh, I believe you were on the board for parts of the, some of, if not all of these years, some of these years. Twenty fifteen, sixteen and seventeen seemed to be pretty hard go at updating the ordinances. Um, it was about the time the last comp plan was approved, so some of those might have been because of it, um. It's like, just tried to, this is just off of our website, I just opened up every one of them to see what I had listed for dates. I'm thinking that the town. Repealed the ban on single-use carryout bags. I just didn't dig to find it, it's still up there.
I think it did. Because the state law was.
State law overrode it.
Right, so I just need to go back through and double check that one, but I believe that one is off the books at this point. But you can see the, you know, a lot of them haven't been updated for a while. Some of them we know we need to do. I tried to put some notes in there for the ones that I know we need to do. Some I kind of question, have we ever enforced? Um, and so I think it's just. An opportunity, it's been almost ten years for, for some of these to look at, are these still relevant? Do we need to change them? Michael's got a list of some going that are in his purview already. Um, harbor and shore, shoreline are already also being amended, um, you know, there's a shore. Um, shellfish committee, rather, um, coming up next week, um, for them to review some of the proposed changes that Kevin had drafted. Um, but again, there's others, we know the sign one has things that come up every year that we need to remind ourselves of and, um, I think looking at that again. I mean, all of them.
Are these all on the internet?
They are. Daryl was saying, when he couldn't, he sent an email today about not being able to make it, but in his review of this, he, he had kind of flagged. You know, he'd like to see us be able to streamline renewals for liquor licensing, entertainment licenses. Um, I think we can throw the marijuana renewals in there potentially if that's comfortable for the town. Um, you know, look at the vending, instead of having a vending ordinance, I mean, does this all get rolled up into like a business licensing ordinance? I mean, that's kind of where those all seem to. Be percolating too, um, and we can define some of that process through that ordinance if we kind of create the new one. Yeah. Be nice to just, where we can streamline it so folks aren't waiting on the government to slow down business.
Yes.
Opportunities and I think we have an opportunity to do that in some areas.
So, so do you want us to look at these and give you thoughts or?
If there's anything that jump out at you or you're particularly interested in, or you want to go down through all of them, I mean, just kind of like, look at the purpose of it. Um, you don't have to go through every piece of it, but you know, if, if there's things you kind of question, hey, I wonder what do we do about that, or is this, you know, if you look at it quickly and is that still relevant? Do we still need to regulate that? Um, I think it's all.
And what is, if it's ten years later, do they need to be increased?
Are we talking fees and the ordinances?
Both, both, I mean, I start with the ordinances, the fees are a separate thing. The condominium conversion's one that went in, into effect in oh eight. There are state statutes on that. It, it looked to me, the only thing that we did by creating the ordinance is put additional time notices, you know. Time restrictions for notifying. The tenants, um, another thirty or sixty days, I think it was, you know, so there's one there. I don't know if we've ever seen anyone come, I mean, we. I mean, the, you're allowed to create a condominium. I don't know that you need to, if you're already a multifamily, to go from a multifamily to a condominium. I don't know if you really need any.
I don't.
Ordinance approval. Yeah.
For the most part, I'm pretty sure. There are restrictions in regulating. Ownership types, like, you can't really restrict who owns a thing, you know, a property, so. I'll have to look and see what state specific.
Okay, so that's, that's one that jumped out at me, like, we need to put additional time on those? I mean, I don't know what led to that coming up.
Oh, I do.
Idea. Um, so just think about that, is that something we need to do? GA gets done every year, the state gives us new minimums.
Yeah.
So, uh, on the, uh, ordinances, you have the licensing adult-use marijuana, licensing medical marijuana, and then on the fee schedule, you have adult-use manufacturing. And adult-use testing facility.
Mm-hmm.
They don't seem to line up. I assume that they're supposed to correspond, but I don't know.
Sorry, line up in.
Well, the fee schedules, I'm, I'm assuming that with the ordinance, there's some requirements to pay a fee, uh, some of these things, but. All I'm saying is that we have them listed as licensing adult-use marijuana and licensing medical marijuana on the ordinance, but then on the fee schedule. You have something totally different.
Well, they have, um, on the page previous to that, there's marijuana, adult-use, medical-use cultivation. And then adult-use manufacturing, adult-use testing, so within the ordinance, there's a whole bunch of different. Options for people, you can grow and manufacture, you can extract and, and process.
I didn't see that, sorry. So why, I think when we set those fees years ago was based on what other. Towns were doing, and that was the best. How we came.
That's our most lucrative fee, that's why I got my.
Yeah, but that's how it came up with that, was all the research and. Discussions on what was fair and. What was consistent.
And should we be looking at it as? Does it need to be updated from twenty seventeen?
Whenever, but we will look at everything anyway, but I think.
That one does, I do, I do have our Amanda, our attorney, working on, um, some drafts, is, um, Mark, was it? Uh, had said there have been some changes in the state statutes since, I don't think we're supposed to refer to it as marijuana.
Yes.
And, um, it's cannabis.
Cannabis.
That small thing, um, but I think, you know, again, in light of, is there supposed to be an actual spelled-out review process for a renewal? It's just kind of gets lost and blended. It's very clear you need to renew, there's a fee for it. But do they need to go through? Your public proceeding and, and again, so. Uh, again, having her already reviewed that for some of those consistency concerns, we have. The statute changes, so that one I think is, is fine. We just maybe come back and look at the.
Cheers, Tom.
Structure and how others do that, um, but we can wait for her guidance on those, move back to that one. The fire, the fire protection, what do we call it? Fire department billing ordinance is one that I'm gonna ask John about. Um, I don't know if we, I haven't, I'm not aware of us sending any bills.
Well, we're used to for different things, you can, you could, you could, uh, submit for things that were. Not normal fire department related things like car accidents with extrication and. Building insurance company, and I don't think we ever got any money back from anything. Um, as far as the alarm ordinance stuff, we need to. Keep that in place anyway, but, but I think you still want to have your. I don't know, just your billing ordinance, just in case you do have some issues. I know the lifelight. Issue for. Was down to the. Miles complex and that, they got put in there for. To bill them because we were going to twenty-six to fifty-something lifelight calls a year.
Right.
And that stopped that really fast. Oh, so they knew their own thing now.
Hmm.
Okay.
Um, I do have a, uh. Question, I, I think we've mentioned it and it is in the. The land use ordinance that I'm updating, I know it's a medical, or enough of medical, the adult-use marijuana ordinance is it spells out specific fees. And we talked about, but make sure it's good with the board before I start. Changing things is. In the ordinances, I'm trying to identify what. And I apologize if I've already brought this up. I have a little data, but, um, what the fees are for, what the fees. What we need to charge fees for, but not the amounts, because they keep. You know, you, you kind of need to keep updating them, and so in the order, and at least in the land use ordinance, like. This should probably just be like a general policy if it's okay with everybody is, um. In the ordinance, it basically says, here's what the fees are, you know, what the fee items are, but the amount will be set by the select board, so that we can. Regularly update them as needed, and I just want to make sure that that's cool.
I think it is.
Yeah.
A lot of them do it that.
Yeah.
Can I ask a general question about fees in, in terms of how setting that going forward? Cause I can imagine there's a couple of different approaches.
Oh, yeah.
Like, one, you can like call around to everyone and sort of do a fee skirt survey, say, you know, what is, you know, figure out six towns, eight towns or something. And that's one approach. One might be the, you know, what it actually costs us.
Right.
Whi, which is another approach, um, for certain fees, that's probably more appropriate, um. And, and then there's always what over the market will bear approach, but I'm not recommending that as a town, but.
Right, well, I think, you know, as part of it is to understand what does it take? For us administratively to carry out these reviews on these different applications. We also have the benchmark of, it costs a certain amount of money.
Right.
Right, to have the code and planning office and because there's a way to generate some revenue. Is there a percentage? And we need to under, I feel like we need to understand better and share with you what are, what the time. It, what time we spend administratively looking over these things. Some of it's general and just should be across the whole tax base. Some of it's not though, right? I mean, you know, should someone who's done no building on their home for thirty years be paying the time and cost for someone to? You know, are we, so are we charging appropriately? So I think we have a lot of ways to look at this and find, understand and internally, I've talked to Michael a few times about. You know, us tracking time internally about where we spend it, it buckets, like not every phone call, how much, but. You know, administratively, how much do you spend in the field? How much time do you spend inspecting? Enforcement issues. But yeah, there's a lot of ways to kind of look at it and it'll be timely to go through, but it's been a while. I don't know the last time, if anyone remembers the last time we did a fee schedule update, but it's been a few years.
Yeah, yeah, like Tom said, some of these just seem really low.
Yeah.
They just, so.
I agree. But. So should we be prepared next time or how do you know about it, Andy?
Yeah, I think, I'm done generally throwing it out there on the ordinance. Piece, I think that for the fee schedule was more to share with you, just acknowledging it has been a while. Like Michael said, I think some of these ordinances should be pulling out a defined fee that's, that's listed in there, just. So you have the ability to dictate, you know, money that needs to be raised and can do that at regular public noticed meetings, um. But if we just, you know, take a few weeks maybe to look through some of those ordinances, the land use. Uh, site plan review, we're not doing anything with subdivision right now, are we? Well, no, we do want to.
Yeah, it's on. I think site plan and subdivision probably should get. Reviewed. Maybe if it's not at the same time.
Yeah.
Near together because. They, they're, they can be a little redundant.
Yeah.
They can avoid that if possible.
So, but this time, like some of the land use and the subdivision and so on, it's not really reflecting. The cop land at this point, this is, you're updating basically the compliance stable.
The land use, yes, the, the, uh, the site plan, there were some changes that had been started when. Uh, Isabel's here. I I think that hopefully we can get the top plan approved somewhat soon.
Yeah.
Um, and if that's the case, then I think a- any changes to the site plan and subdivision. Would be to bring it into uh, make it consistent with the comp plan. I mean, they always need to be, but we're gonna have a new comp plan.
Right.
Um, the land use stuff that's going right now is mostly. To make it compliant with the state, the LD two thousand three, and then also just some cleaning up, uh that really isn't. Consistent or not consistent with the comp plan, its definitions and, you know, clarifications.
Yeah.
So. If I go trying to get the consistency with the comp plan to anything that might. Kind of anything that's like, that's in that category, wait until we have updated complaints, so.
On this list, if if Board of Appeals, you start there and go down to fireworks on that list. I feel like that one is, if we just generally take the time to just browse the purpose of those and. Any of them strike you, they may dive deeper into that, um, pace, property maintenance and restricted vehicle, weight. Those, that group, those three there. Signs, small wind, solar. And then town landing, traffic and bending. Those are the ones that I think are. All the rest of them, I think, are already under some form of review or have been a little more recent, um, or will be very shortly. But those other ones are kind of. Worth just reviewing again quickly, um, and just see are they still relevant? Because it's been a while, so I think it's okay to think that, like. It's, we do need to review these. I mean, some statutes, you know, on the state level just get created and are actually forgotten. Yeah, I just called one out the other day at a building, a colleague of mine who's also a code officer. And I said, this, I think it was the building official. There's a, you know, outside of like where you'd find your code officer stuff and plumbing inspector. In the statute, there's a requirement that every town have a building official. And the building official be inspecting things like, um, making sure that when chimneys are installed and every new construction that there's. You know, safety measures put in place up by the contractor when they're, I'm like, you do, do you do this? And he's like, no, I've never done that. You know, the move back would 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 say otherwise, but if you're working in an old home. You know, you're just doing renovations, you're not maybe gonna, you're still gonna have some of that old system. A lot of them now are direct men. You know, but your older homes, we have a lot of.
Right.
I was like. But it's suggesting that you have to appoint a building official and it's kind of different than a code officer, although it could be the same person. I was like, either way, we aren't. Doing what the statute calls for, and he's he's serves on the state board and international board or. US board, and so he's like, he's he's involved in, and he's like, I've never done. So, um, that's one that he kind of is thinking about and looking at. But again, the good, we should look at ordinances periodically. We should probably shouldn't go ten years or. Or more than the next number of years before we look at them again and make sure they're still relevant.
Yeah.
So, okay, so look at those, maybe come.
So that's our homework, so that's our homework for next meeting, check it in October, maybe on that status of those. If anything jumps out at you, I'll look as well.
Um, but maybe just kind of.
Good.
Put it out there for a few meetings and get some time to look at it.
Perfect.
Then we can try and tackle some this winter or over the course of a year.
Yeah.
Might take longer. The fees, again, it was mostly just to bring it to your attention. I think there's a lot of things to mark up and look at on that. That's what I started to do. Um, some things we don't, I think, need to have on there anymore, because we don't do like this. If we repealed the single plastic. Bag.
Right.
Bean or whatever, then. Some of the other ones should take phone calls to other towns and see, what do you charge per square foot and. Do these make sense? I mean, and one of the things we've run into internally is, you know, the difference between an application fee and then the. The fee, you know, if you're charging by the square foot and.
Right.
And even one that Michael and I talked about, if you go through site plan review, making sure we're clear internally and for the applicant's sake, you know. Set a separate set of fees to the site plan review. You look at the ordinance, it kind of feels like it might be, you look at the fee schedule, it's like, is it? So, and just making sure it's very clear, um, for everybody involved that they don't, they don't wanna come here and get more confused, so. And if we're confused, then they're gonna be. Thing jumps out at you, if you have some things that you want us to kind of run down, just let us know, we'll we'll also start doing that ourselves.
Well, is there any way we could help?
I think if there's just something that jumps out at you, um, if you want us to, again, look into a little bit deeper, we'll. Like Dan was saying, I think we'll take some time to look internally if we can maybe think about maybe like a Ju- January one. Kind of update on the fees where we can. If there's anything that's in an ordinance, we're gonna have to probably keep it in the ordinance until that gets changed, but. For anything that's just relating to and referencing the fee schedule, maybe we aim for January one. Um, if you want, we can wait till the next fiscal year starts for July. It's just a matter of, you know, we just need to review those and see what's, what's going.
Everybody good? Anything else, Andy?
Um, just shared with you the, um, Josh was acquiring about our audits, a little bit later this year than has been.
Yeah.
Way late.
Yeah.
Um, our part's done, and it was submitted back before the town reports were due. Um, we did get this, what I shared with you here is what we got back in May in an effort to try and get something in the town report. Um, we haven't gotten anything further. I do know, my understanding is they've been waiting for the schools audit to be. That those numbers to be given to our auditor, because we have to do a blended report with the schools. Um, because it's such a significant portion of our operation, kind of cash flow.
Yes.
Um, so that's that's my understanding is they're waiting for the school. Um, I I said, I did, yes, um, I'd asked Peter last night real quick while he was, you were there. Um, he said they are working to ask for another extension from the state. I mean, you probably know they have to have their audits done by December thirty first, I believe it is. The following, you know, following that fiscal year.
Right.
Um, anything after that requires extensions and approval from the state. So he said that they are still working to get those, their audit finished, um. And until those get done, we're not gonna have a blended report. So I did ask for our auditor to give me. Our ending balances, they do have our numbers. We don't have all of it in the short form that I've given you here. I'd like to know what they're saying, our. Reserve balances are, so I can update ours. I mean, we keep track, but making sure the interest rates that have been earned, because it has been significant interest in the last couple of years is appropriated. Right, and you know, what they say is kind of what goes, so, um, just like to be able to update those. You wanna know where our fund balance sits. Officially, we have, we do have an idea, and we can track, obviously, but. Again, what their number is, is what it is, so just wanna make sure we're right there. So they should have that for the next meeting, so he wants, you should, by the end of next week, he can get us our numbers only.
Well, good. Any other questions, discussion items? Dan, you got any?
Well, I went to a couple of meetings in the last week, so you can talk about this, the school.
No, you can have that one.
No.
I make, I make people mad.
No, 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 no. So I, so in in that, Daryl, um, asked me to go to the Francis Perkins. Gathering. Cause he couldn't make it, and it wasn't invitation only, so, um.
And he stopped at the door. No entry.
No, no, they let me in, but it was fine. And but actually, I walked in the door and I was like. This is probably the the most high-powered group that I've ever seen gather in Lincoln County in one place at one time. Now, um, the the the, um, it was, it was supposed to be. This woman who's essentially in charge of the National Park Service for this, for the country. You know, and and that was gonna be a big deal in and of itself, that she would be there. But as it turns out, her boss, who's the Secretary of the Interior, Deb Holland, came to Newcastle, Maine.
Really?
Yes, and it was just like, it trumped everything, you know, and it was just like, oh, my God, this is like a big time person. Plus, the deputy, who was the the National Park Service person, so I walk in the room and there's Shelley Pingery sitting there. And then I sit down and then, um, then there's Shannon Bellows, who's the Secretary of State.
Right.
Um, the um, the Speaker of the House was there. The Majority Leader of the Senate, Troy Jackson, was there. I mean, it just kept going. The guy who's. The head of AFL-CIO for the state of Maine was there. And 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 that, I mean, that was, I mean, you know, it was like the, the that lady historian was there for for, you know, Heather Cox. So. History professor from like Mount Holyoke College, which apparently where our friend Francis Perkins went to college, and so she came and spoke as well. And 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 that's only like half the people that spoke, and and so it was just like, this was a pretty big deal, um, for for the area, so. My guess is that, um, just given where we are, my guess is that sometime in the next six months, we'll probably hear that it will get approved, but. Can't swear, but it was pretty, it was a pretty cool event, just to be present for it, just to listen, so. Um, so that happened. And then I also went to the Great Salt Base Sanitary District meeting, because they were doing their bond offering. And since, since I live in town and I'm on the water system, I just decided. And you had mentioned something about the timing of when they would do their projects as well, so I was just curious about that in terms of. Um, Taylor has got bid, and so they 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 had, they can decide. Which part of their projects they wanna do first is a couple of different bond offerings. Um, and fortunately, Scott did say that you had been advocating. Cause I asked specifically, if you've been advocating not to do the downtown portion, the church do portion, even though somebody else wanted to do that portion first, so. I'd be surprised if has the portion that happens in the fall, um, they're gonna probably focus on Keen Woods to start, because.
Keen, Keen's Wardens was a different.
That's different, but it's, but it, there's, there's two different bond offerings, one.
Right.
There's three actually, but but that one.
There's back, back Meadow. Back Meadow, Hammond Street, and then Keen's Ward was a separate.
Yeah, the one that went out to bid was the back Meadow Church Street. They're gonna run new water lines from the stand pipe all the way down.
Right.
Main Street, right, and then across Hammond and kind of create a loop there. Um, that's awarded to Hagar, those two roads serve to Hagar Enterprise, and then. Keen Woods did just, I don't know if they've decided on Keenwood.
They opened the bids, I think Pratt was the lowest.
They are.
Was the lowest.
Yep, and so, yeah, for for GSB, they don't, they're probably gonna have a couple going at the same time.
Yeah.
For sure.
Yeah, but but they could do like the stand pipe in the back Meadow roads first instead of church street, while the.
I was hoping that that could happen, so I've been talking to Scott about, you know.
And he mentioned that that's what they're advocating for, so, so hopefully they're successful in that. Because otherwise, it would be a bit of a mess.
And they'll still be ahead of the other church street work, because we still don't have.
Right.
Any guaranteed funding yet on that, uh, to to move forward, so.
Yeah.
Um, it will at least be able to be completed before we.
Yeah, and yeah, one of the other things that I took away was that, and you. There's something called a hydrant charge that comes to the town.
Yes.
So the hydrant charge is probably gonna increase fairly significantly. For us as part of that, and it's split between us and Newcastle, and apparently we've added new hydrants or in the process of it.
I think there's a lot to dive into to understand better.
Yeah, so it was.
Mostly PU, PUC sets the rate.
Yeah.
There's not much control over it.
Yeah, I think, I think they they put a minimum amount that needs to be raised, uh, and a maximum amount that needs to be raised. Through the hydrants, and so I said, there's a little bit I need to understand about that.
Yeah, and I think one of the guys on the board didn't realize who I was, you know, as a select board member, and I still advantaged to being a little anonymous that way. And he said, our interest isn't, the towns' interests aren't our highest interest. I said that, I was like, oh, okay. So, um, in their interest runs to, I don't, they, they feel their priority is. Uh, household ratepayers as opposed to anyone else, so.
So you're on the roll, Dan, you might as well keep talking about the education, ESC too, you took notes.
Well, I did, I, um. I I found the, uh, the, um. For me, it was just trying to understand what they were, where they had sort of advanced the whole project. And and, you know, and in this ECS, I think, you know, partly it's just. It's, it's still an acronym acronym soup of AOS, ECS, RSU's and these other things and. And trying to understand who's doing what and where and why, and who pays for which pieces of this and who's responsible for what pieces of it, and so. I I think I understand what they're doing, um, it's it's clearly the most efficient thing, if you're into efficiency, and you just wanna be RSU for all of the schools, but that's. That, that didn't last the first public meeting in Noboro, so that.
Right.
That crashed pretty quick.
Right.
Um, so I think where they ended up is interesting, but it, but the the only thing that seemed to have advanced so far is the GSB RSU. And I think the RSU is, um. Is inter, and so I I don't, I'm still thinking about the meeting in terms of what the the takeaways were from it. My my guess is that it's, um, it it should happen, the ECS, because the AOS doesn't make any sense at this point. It's a very inefficient. Model, and the RSU, you do get, uh, not the RSU, the ECS.
The ECS.
ECS.
ESC.
Yes.
ESC.
Yes, see, I used to know another acronym for.
A service center.
Educational services.
Educational Service Center, um, there are incentives from the state to to. So that that makes sense to to move forward.
That's part of the whole point.
Yeah.
That seems to meet on the, on our service to be the biggest reason to even consider it. Ninety four dollars per student.
Yeah.
Um, credited.
Pre, pre K through twelve, right?
Yeah.
Um, so there's a subsidy there to still deliver the same service, fifty percent of the director's cost, which will be Peter. For the business manager. Um, fifty percent is paid by the state, so all of a sudden that cost for half of that position gets lowered for everyone buying into that.
Yeah.
Um, so there's financial incentives that are great, the organizational structures, it will add another board. You know, GSB's, the three towns and the GSB will go from four boards to two boards. Uh, or to one board, but then they're gonna add the ESC board, there'll still be an AOS.
But.
So there.
GSB's not part of the AOS, because they won't be, they're asking to leave.
They won't be part of the AOS, they'll be part of the model for ESC.
Right.
So they're still gonna, you know, manage that now budget slightly differently than the A, because AOS will still have its own set of services that are gonna be just for. The four remaining. Schools, towns, um, will, will be able to eliminate our secondary school account internally and. A second budget for each of those three towns, second, oh, I think one of them is K twelve, is Bremen K twelve already?
Bremen. Well, Bremen's for GSB.
They are, I didn't know if they were already, we're, we're, we have a second, second, we have a secondary.
Right, well, they were, they have the same thing as the three towns, Newcastle, Damascot, and Bremen have the same.
Yeah, so they can streamline that budgeting for GSB and the three towns all in a one budget, which will be easier for sure.
Yeah, and and and, and it was interesting thinking about how the the voting works as too, in terms of the different school districts. And I guess I didn't realize that GSB accounted for almost forty percent of the, of the, um, school population, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, a part of it, so. That that's a big piece in and of itself.
For one member.
Yeah. Yeah.
So. But it sounds like there's still room for them to work within some of those parts. They'd have to submit to the state by the end of October, if I under, if I heard right. So that they have an opportunity to be approved and be considered in the funding formula the state approves in January.
Right.
And then that kind of trickles down through the budget process to know what the state's gonna provide them.
So at this point, Ken, our role is, we don't really have a role in this.
No, if there's glaring, if there's glaring things to, as they said, you know, I don't know, do you want me to invite the. The school committee to the next select board meeting? I think it would be before their next meeting, if there's questions you have or want them to relay or.
I don't have any questions. Everything was pretty straightforward last night.
Okay.
Other than the fact that like a rebate check if we don't, they don't provide the service, they say they're gonna provide.
Oh, yeah.
They can't fit all our position.
I was a little surprised they could run a fund balance like a school or a town would. If it was more, if we see if it's being seen as more of a contracted service, like, that's how it was explained, right? You're gonna hire a contracted service to do your bookkeeping.
Right.
And and, I mean, you, you, here's your fee, you pay it, um, but. Well, it's serving two things, right? It's serving more like an, you know, administrative office for a school district, but. And they can have a a fund balance if the funds aren't spent, like a position gets, you know, goes unfilled or whatever, but. Um, so we're thinking of it, trying to work like this, we're saying it works more like this, you know, functions more like a contracted service, but. This, you know, when you get to that end of it, you know, on on the back end there, just.
Well, I guess where the AOS was not a fiscal agent, but the ECS. The Educational Service Center is.
Yes.
It will be a fiscal agent, so.
I mean, that small thing like paying for adult ed, like we can't write the check to. AOS, uh, we write it to.
Right.
It was sad, something seventy four or something. You know, so they've, they're running it through the GSB budget currently, because they are the fiscal agent, um. But yeah, so they can make things a little more streamlined that way for sure, it sounds like.
Yeah.
Moving pieces.
Yeah, a lot of moving pieces, uh, and 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 not that it matters. Well, it could matter to the, to GSB eventually, and so does indirectly is, is what's going on in Bristol and South Bristol in terms of those incentives down there. To, um. They can have a minimum charge for a community. Uh, which I actually, I think at some level I understand why they need to do that, is because, um. You know, they still have. You know, they still have to meet with their 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 boards and still prepare budgets and do these sorts of things. And it doesn't really matter if you're doing it for. You know. Fifty student school or a five hundred student school.
Still have to do the process.
Yeah, so. So it it's the only one that will affect is South Bristol at this point. Terms of. Paying the minimum charge greater than what they made it.
I think it's, seems as though it's most advantageous that it. Most whatever it takes to make the ESC. Happen is important for all involved, because I don't know if they've run numbers to look at, well, what if this ESC isn't formed? AOS still. Has its place and has its staff.
Right, but if it doesn't.
If they don't form, we've removed, we're removing ourselves from the AOS by becoming an RSU, and so. That question then comes, well, we, GSB would need to make sure they're prepared, you know, granted what we're paying AOS would. Not go to AOS, so you've got to take a money that gets contributed from the three towns now. Is it enough if an ESC isn't formed to provide all of that business admin contracted service work that they were talking about yesterday? Um, and I don't know if anyone's, if our board members have asked that that question, just as hypothetical. Um, I know on the back of the envelope, I said, well, what do we all contribute? Could we do it? It was like. Yeah, probably. Um, you know, fill a space, you gotta put them somewhere, but.
So are you, so you you're saying that the like the the RSU, the new RSU could just go alone, basically?
Well, if you had to, if you had, if the ESC doesn't get formed.
But then you'd lose.
And then you'd have to, you'd be out on, you'd be on your, all by yourself.
Right.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And you'd lose the funding.
Well, well, then maybe the 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 RSU can form an ECF or an educational service center on their own.
I think it's worth it all going in together, I'm just saying.
I I understand what you're saying.
Those economies to scale for sure, than than that are gained by these sort of things.
But depends on what a fee's gonna be too.
Yeah, he did say try and run those numbers out for their school board before their next, so they can discuss it at their next meeting. They did have some preliminary numbers last year in the budget process, um, but he's gonna rework those, I think, it sounds like, and get those back out to. Understand, like Dan was saying, I mean, you got your minimum receipt, minimum number now that a hundred thousands was proposed and some of them was South Bristol to go from like. Fifty, sixty thousand, seventy thousand to a hundred thousand, so for them, it's a big jump.
Yeah.
And and then there's a minimum proposed minimum increase each year unless it's voted otherwise, um, if you're a minimum pay. Um, just to keep building that equity, but yeah.
Be interested.
It will be.
So you, you all good nowadays?
I I think I'm all good.
You're coming along. Andrea.
Uh, my only question was, when do absentee ballots come out?
Uh, typically thirty days before. Um, the polls are open. So it'll be early October, first week of October. You can request them soon.
You can even request them already.
Yeah, it might.
They're just.
Because like both my children want to vote, but they don't live in this country.
Hmm, so we have to get them first, so that's. State where we, state has to provide them to us.
Okay.
So the. Becky, Becky says. Usually you can get them thirty days out. Uh, so as soon as we get them, we we pull them out and as people request. Um, the absentee ballot, they'll drop them off, you know, she starts building that list and and the packet for them. As soon as we get the ballots, they start stopping them. Or the mail, or people come pick them up.
Well, can I do that? Like, can I pick up my children's absentee ballot and mail them to them?
Um, best to ask.
Becky?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not, I don't want to mistake that.
I was supposed to do that.
I know that it changes the closer to the election you get. There's only. Certain family members that can take it out for another. Once you get to a certain point, it needs to be a valid, certain amount of reason. Narrow, narrow, the window narrows for you to take it for someone else at some point, so.
Sure.
Just check touch base with her, she'll be in tomorrow.
Anything else? All good? I'm all good, so. I think I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Second, third.
All those are. And I think we still have some paperwork.
Thanks.